Call the meeting of the Board of Alderman to order. Roll call please ahead.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Gorman.
Yep.
Alderman Lookin.
Up present.
Alderman Lorab, Alderman Ward, and Alderman Nagley.
Here.
Yes. All right. Join me in place? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, consent agenda. Anyone have a chance to list their packet?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. So a motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Does he, uh... Council's table over 1250? Any questions? Any questions on that?
They put a new deal in at the landfill. Opera on the cable.
The one at the landfill was not functioning after we ran into it.
Oh.
So that's the...
Columbia.
That's Columbia's landfill gate.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh... On a rainy Friday, a week from Friday, a week ago Friday, um, it was dark, rainy about 4:30 and I guess Jimmy was anxious to get home and missed the signal that there is no light or alarm. There's a guy at the gate who has to physically close it. I talked to the city of Columbia about it. I talked to Jimmy. I talked to... It was a momentary lapse of concentration.
Okay.
All right.
Don't they force them repairing hours, repairing somebody else's?
Yeah. We didn't send it to insurance or anything. He was pretty clear with it.
Yeah.
Faithen.
Did nothing to damage the truck.
Uh, it bent the, um, the bumper. We fixed it in-house for... It, it, all told, it wouldn't have triggered... I mean, we would've had to pay any don, dollar one on liability, but...
The deductible.
Yeah. It's better just take care of it. The deductible on our truck would've been way higher than this.
Right. Okay. Sorry to ask.
Yeah. Could've given you guys more of a heads up.
So the motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve the bill over 1250.
Second. So a motion is second to bill, approve the bill over 1250 in amount of $333,859.86. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Presentation by Municipal Code Corporation.
Uh, the city has, uh, the city has a contract, well, has a, has been working with Sullivan, which has been purchased by General Code for a number of years. The cost to update to the new software is going to be significant, so I thought it was time if we wanted to look at an option from UniCode, which is the main competitor. This would be the time. I mentioned this at the general government meeting and you guys said you were a man more for the idea of allowing municipal code to make a presentation. So they're going to do one remotely today and then on the meeting, the, of the 12th of, I think it's 12th of January, um, we can have Sullivan, General Code come in and I believe Dale Barstow also at UniCode will be back to answer any questions. And then we can make a, have a decision at the January 19th Board of Alderman meeting. So without any further ado, let Municipal Code Corporation make a presentation on their product.
Thank you very much. My name is James Bonneville and I'm, we may also have Dale Barstow on the line as well. Dale, are you there, my chances?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I got you.
Okay.
Dale, do you want to start off with the part about the, uh, for Volvo or do you want me to hand it back to your staff?
Uh, why don't you go ahead, James, since you have control and I'll be here to maybe chime in if needed or whatever.
Okay, perfect. Well, the first things first, I kind of wanted to talk about the proposal itself and then we'll dive into code online functionality, we'll talk about, uh, the front page page, how to search and retrieve, um, and, um, disseminating that information out as well as additional features of functionality as far as what other communities have done when you're drafting legislation and also, um, looking at supporting documentation like bits or agendas from boards and commissions to have that integrated with your code as well as the building people. So first, I'd like to talk a little bit about the proposal itself. The transition process would be basically go talk to yourself, take what you guys have, put it into our system. Um, you'd also get the code online free for one year, which we call it my D, because you've got code online for some of the additional features. For example, code bank, which I'll go into where you can look at specific portion, or look at the code and how it reads a specific portion of the time. And that's just one example of that. As you guys add on to new ordinances to the code itself, we can supplement it into the code down on the online and also in print format at $18 a page. With that proposal, you guys can receive five books if you'd like to have five books. But that's just a quick synopsis. You guys have the information right there. Um, I kind of wanted to explain things like that, right, right, need to talk about the code online itself. Uh, right now, we're showing you the city of Columbia, Missouri. Does everybody see that there right now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So literally, there's a couple different things we can give here. For example, I'm going to go up the upper left-hand corner. This is a new search bar, uh, search tool. Every time we develop a new, uh, uh, updater code online, this is like the third, fourth, eighth item of the company over the last five years. Our whole goal, thought process, is to create less links and less clicks to get to the information at hand. Why? It's easier for the tenant to go through the senior, but least of mine creates the file they're looking for, frustration, especially for those who, because they're only looking at computers being a foreign option. And what we want to do is help empower them and use the file they're looking for and get what they want. Otherwise, when they get used, they're going to call you. And when they call you, nine-nine-nine, it's usually kind of a fact. We're trying to empower them as much as possible so you guys can work more on addition in long-term code. So there's a couple different ways we can go into search. For example, like going like a word, I might go, go in to search by and see more, like in this case, water permits. As you can see along the left-hand side, anywhere within the code itself will water permits inspection, which could be, you know, quite extensive. I can actually help scale down that request as well. For a bit, like going to the advanced search in Bill. And let's say we want to look at a buggy search. Say there's a street game that I need to spell it. Boom, I can do it by myself with buggy search, it will still find what we're looking for. A substantive search. So let's say, um, you can bring up dog, cat, like different type of animal permit or just have one specific animal permit, we refer to all animals, cats. No matter what, probably three, the apples or oranges, they'll still find what they're looking for. And well, if steps or any type of defects or stomachs, maybe a tax of words, they'll still find that, that word. And then voiding search. Majority of the time, what you're going to find is people that are doing this, like the advanced searching or people make yourselves within the government office, you know you're looking for a more refined search. Also, a narrow path in that search. Rather than searching the entire code where we're taking, like you're taking like water right in right now, we could have a hundred results. I could go away and say, you know, let's see your check, three of your checks, fifteen, and get five results, five results. Once we find what we're looking for, get all the results right here, just in case I make a mistake, I can always go back to different sections. And anywhere with water directions, we have more permits or permits or any, the defects or stomachs is right there for us. Now, now we found this information, how can we disseminate it out? There's a couple different ways we can do that. For example, I can actually, simply share that link, like put it to, email that, uh, section of the code to that constituent. And it doesn't have to be in crowd lots of words, email it out or do any kind of loss or community fight as well. We can print that. A lot of changes, we see people with, uh, printing, this is more than about it. Basically, like you're transitioning ordinance, you're addressing ordinance, you're showing the town hall where you were and where you're going to in the future. They can see that transition process. The one valuable tool dissemination that a lot of people have glossed on to, glossed on to quite a bit, is the downloading function. What we can do is go in and download the section into a Word document. So rather than having a Word document displayed that you may or may not have, uh, uh, saved over, because God knows that stuff that million times, my length, I can go right, show your code online as a update tool. And I can go in and just download, let's say, this section and three sections, two and four. And I can go in and basically, now, make, uh, let's say, cloud the app and wrap up your ordinance, we're changing section 76 and section eight. I can just track changes, having to, committing powerful process, that's approved, having to separate the code, uh, for, uh, supplementation into the code itself. What we found in reply to that, we worked in 16, 17 percent of time and just getting that information, uh, into a draftable format. Do you have any questions thus far, as far as, uh, search and retrieval and dissemination? Before I move on?
No, I don't see any questions here.
Jimmy? Perfect. Now, I talked about those, there's a couple of issues as well that we want to kind of guide you to. For example, one is code bank. I talked about those before. If we can actually look at the specific code and how it reads a specific point in time period, here in Columbia, we've already been given a supplementation backend to live, uh, to live version, version itself as well. Rather than calling up the, tell you get a copy of how it read that specific time period and need it for a lawsuit or, let's say, just research purposes, you can go on your code online and see how it writes and how the ordinance is tied to other sections of the code. So in search of the exact same way, it tells you right here where I've bumbled versions of the code. And it works exactly the same way. We can actually also go in to the code bank and look at ordinances from the past too as well. So we can look at the code from the past, uh, from a code standpoint as well as a specific ordinance standpoint. Now, for drafting legislation, I know a lot of people, like, if you call or if you need to see what they've done, we've got over 3,500 clients nationwide. We have given you the ability of going in and seeing what those other communities have done, let's say, just like, uh, police spa or, and with burning stoves. We can do a quick search, just, uh, jury clients and see what has gone on, because you may like specific portions of the communities, what they've done. Let's see here, wood burning stoves. And we got, uh, roughly about 1,500 different results. I did like a portion of Springfield was done for that, that all Perryville, Nevada, and really create a border plate to what really you want to do in the community itself. So rather than trying to reinvent the wheel and slowing down the process of, uh, piece of legislation that's trying to pass in the community, uh, we can help give you guys the tools to help, you know, cut down that amount of time and find what other people have done in that process. Also, we have facility within that tool where you can actually go in and put bookmarks and create notes. So you can see what's happened, there's certain communities you like to look at time to time. People there coming up their legislation, it allows them to keep doing that, going back from time to time again to help develop what business might be overall. I also sent Matt a, uh, link to Columbia, Missouri's website for the mobile friendly program. Now, any type of mobile device, Android, iPhone, iPad, whatever it may be, now, you can literally bring up your code online as long as you're here and basically look up information. This one is incredible, and also fixes the screen, recognizes you if you're fighting. What makes this valuable for you is, for, say, the code enforcement officer. Unless the code enforcement officer wants to get big arms, carrying a book around or having that laptop with him, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Unless the code enforcement officer wants that big arms, carrying a code book around or having their laptop with them, they can just have a phone or an iPad and look up that, uh, that ordinance fraction or whatever information that must be throughout the field and then if there's any questions from the constituents, they can actually email directly to police and fire departments, uh, council members, being more transparent. Say you're at a local restaurant, you get a call, you're about, uh, zoning issue, you can give that to them right away on the spot, have them do it. Plus, even in towns needs like this, people got way past the books, literally, you can iPad and find information much more quickly, helping to move on. So, kind of went through information there, talking about search retrieval, uh, dissemination of materials. We also went into talking about looking at what other communities have done. And lastly, about mobile friendly. Now, I know on your old site, you had enacted legislation, recently enacted legislation on a separate tab that wasn't fully integrated with your code. With the municipal code framework, it is all right there on one specific section. Get back to my homepage. Right here on the front, non-codifiable or non-codifying, yeah, for, now, Columbia hasn't been, right straight from the front page and has also searchable too as well. Automatically can be brought up right here, you can see it, you have more. So a little bit of a change of what you see right now within your existing website. One last thing before we move on, uh, switch to a different community. We're going to look at the different counties out there a while. What they have done within our system is have the ability to integrate their code with their management agenda. So I can go in and do a search across three different platforms or, in this case, with Flag. You can see which ones include their code. And here regards to Minnesota, Minnesota as well, there's some issues with that. What's nice about that, if you integrate that tool within your system, you can actually see how transition process, you're committing a council before you got that piece of legislation in your codebook itself. Because the, you know, verbiage from a research purpose internally, the code, you know, definitely means something to you, but, you know, how do you get some point change point? And it gives you kind of that open action as well. Are there any questions?
That last verb, that last, uh, feature you showed us, that's with the My Uni Pro, or My Uni Code, that's the, the goal on, because the, adding the other documents, the minutes, the agendas, um, the comprehensive plan, et cetera, that's, that's with the, the, the...
Mini Docs.
Uni Docs.
I don't have, I don't have Docs up right in front of me and kind of crash up your end. Or, I, I literally, as soon as my phone started, you, you started hearing me is when, uh, that Docs could crash up you, the different device. So I don't have that up right in front of me, but all Uni Docs.
Uni Docs. Okay, we've got the, uh, the Uni Docs is, uh, it says quote upon or quest.
Dale, are you there, my chances?
The, uh... That's the one where you, it depends, you sort of give us an, any, do you want to know what I'm thinking of?
Dale, are you there?
Yes, can y'all hear me?
Yeah. I got you.
Okay. Yeah, the Uni Docs, uh, basically, we have a, the process is where it's for a hundred documents a year and the document can be one page or a thousand pages. We will index and add it to the Uni Docs. It's normally on the annual services, it's $750 for up to a hundred documents. But if you have less documents, say you meet, uh, 24 times a year and you have 24 sets of minutes, we adjust that price down. It actually comes to about $7.50 a document type. And we can work with you on that and we usually just analyze, uh, how many documents you have. Uh, Columbia came to us and they had 10,000 documents they wanted to put in the Uni Docs. And so we had to re-coordinate or whatever with them and they're anticipating down the road adding to the Uni Docs. So, uh, we're, you know, we're placed a foot on that, it just depends on each city, because we work with cities of all sizes and of course they have, you know, and really the Uni Docs part of it has, I say, no conscience, because we can put policy manuals, we can put resolutions, uh, your OrdBank service that we offer includes the ordinances, so you're covered there. And with OrdBank, just keep in mind, the real advantage of OrdBank is the linking to the history in your codebook. There's so many ti... Yeah, so many times, uh, people will go into the code and they'll see this section, they'll say, I want to see the ordinance that made that change. And you can click on the historical note at the bottom of the section and it'll pull that ordinance up that James showed you before, under OrdBanks. Plus, we link it to your comparative table in the codebook and to your ordinance history, or your supplement history table too. So it's linked in about three different places. And over the years, we had surveyed the city clerks, city attorneys, the planners, and that's where we came up with our codebank, being able to go back on previous versions of the code. And now, we can actually give you the comparison of what changed from one version to the other. That is a new feature that we're launching. So there's a lot of advantage and those two items are the historical items that take so much time on the city's part to do research and go back and say, uh, you know, we've had cities call us and say, we need a copy of our code as it read five years ago. So now, with these features, you can go back and restore those copies. And normally, when we tag over a new account, you go forward on it and, uh, and it's an account that we don't have. And if you have versions of the code going back that you have on CD or whatever, we can possibly coordinate with you to incorporate those.
Okay. All right, well, that was the point. You answered whatever question I had. We're getting, we have a fairly long agenda, so if there's anything else, any other pitch you want to make, you got about 90 seconds.
Okay. Well, we've made, we've done a lot of these conversions from what we call as foreign accounts, which were accounts that were done in-house or by other codifiers. And we have developed a system where we can move it right into our system. And what you just looked at, it's been two years in the making, it's called our UniCode Next. And we have e-notify coming onboard within a month that will, people can register in and they can see what's coming up or what's been changed. And the code comparator will give you the comparison of what was in the older, the previous version to the new version. And we do a lot of work in Missouri, we've worked out there a long time and hopefully we look forward to working with you guys in the future.
All right. We appreciate you being here from Florida and Minnesota all on the same night and we'll be, uh, we'll be in touch and give you a chance if you want to come by and answer questions if we have new ones on the 12th.
Okay.
Very good.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Extraordinary time.
All right. Comments from citizens? Are you, do you want to discuss that at all or...
That's up to you. I mean, we have plenty of time to discuss it. I am, I would be quite happy with, uh, pulling the discussion for later unless there's some burning question you have right now.
We have another presentation coming from the...
The cable we have now, General Code, uh, well, it's, it's been Sullivan Publications for years and years and years.
Yeah.
They've been purchased by General Code, but yeah, they're, they're in a, uh, attend on the general government meeting on the 12th.
We'll have time for compare and contrast.
Yes, yes. And Dale said that he might be there also to come back and, you know.
Okay. Thank you. All right, comments from citizens? Yes, ma'am. Say your name and address for reference.
Jessica Lorsini, 231 South Naquin Street. I just had a quick question for Mr. Harline on the long-term RFP. The co-op that wasn't considered, what did their, what were their rates historically compared to the other providers?
Well, the, the city, are you talking about the long-term rates, RFP?
Yeah.
Long-term, uh, the long-term per, power purchase?
Yeah.
The, the, to get a bid from them, the city of Centralia would have to become a lifetime member of the co-op. It had nothing to do with the rates. We're in a, we're in a cooperative purchasing, um, agreement on this with Hannibal, Marceline, Cahoka, um, City of California, and it was not the Boone County Cooperative, it was, uh, I can't remember the name of the cooperative. It was, it wouldn't have fit with our structure. There are 11 other bidders still out there.
Okay.
So that's why we didn't allow, I think it's the Wabash Valley Cooperative.
Okay, so basically it would've interfered with our cooperative bargaining with the other cities, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, the, the consultant decided that that wouldn't work for any of the members to, to become a lifetime member of this Indiana Cooperative, our Cooperative. I'm not even sure we would be eligible for membership.
Okay, I was just curious as to what the historical rates compared is, because if it turns out that this particular cooperative has historical rates that are significantly lower than other providers courtesy of the fact that they are cooperative and thereby a nonprofit, a lifetime management might not have any bad, but that's just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Jessica. Close the comments from citizens. Hey, you have an economic development report in your packet from the chambers? They didn't have a meeting this week, so... Couple of notes, the gingerbread house display, it's small but it still continues to draw participation. Uh, the tractor parade is still on schedule for the December 19th. And gifts are being gathered for the community for kids program. As of this writing, we have 32 families with 71 kids. Is that, is that normal or...
It's down a little bit.
Is it?
Uh, not a lot, but it is down a little bit from what it had in the past. I think we moved it a little bit out of the recession, but that's helping so.
Thank you. All right. Public carriages, none scheduled, is that still the case? Yes. Yes. Yes, sir.
Pardon me, Your Honor, I was wondering if either the two economic development groups that the city is subsidizing was involved in the search to replace the, um, late doctor Bradley who is, who are around.
I don't have an answer to that question yet, but I will inquire with them.
I can tell you that the chamber is making some inquiries.
With who and how?
I don't know, but they are doing some, we're on research on that.
Ready?
I, I don't have a ready for you there.
Thank you.
I don't have an answer to that question yet, but I will inquire with them.
I can tell you that the chamber is making some inquiries.
With who and how?
I don't know. They are doing some research on that.
Have you ready?
I don't have a ready for you on that.
Thank you.
All right. Action Agenda Finance, nothing. Prominence and License, nothing. Legal. Amending Section thirteen dash thirteen of the Tri-City Code to increase rates for residential and commercial solid waste services. This is, the ordinance requires two readings. There is, ordinance, let's just pass it around there.
The most recent version was available about twenty minutes ago. There's a couple of edits that, I copied over the edited version and went back to a previous version. The big differences in the most recent edit is wherever it says ninety-six gallons, it has the word ninety-six gallon, ninety-six written out in the ninety-six in parentheses. We added the word per, in Section A subsection one in the first sentence, added the word per month. For some reason, we had, we had never had the per month specifically stated, yeah, how often residential customers were charged. In Section Two, the wording was changed slightly. It used to include the full rate and then list the reduced rate for a single person who is sixty-five years of age or older and resides in a single family home, et cetera, et cetera, who asks for and receives and has granted the lower charge as a senior citizen. So we just took out the, the full rate and it now only mentions the reduced rate in that paragraph. These are the changes since the version that went out on Friday. And then, in. If you have the right one, it's going to say. Under Section A subsection one, it says per month.
Yeah. Okay, well, apparently, it's gotten onto the Trump, too.
This is the one that's on right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, that's, yes. Yes, it's in the electronic version. Yeah, so if you have, if you opened up, if anyone's looking at a version earlier, that's what it's doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
None of, none of the changes changed the substance of anything, just stylistic, non-substantial changes.
One thing I should note, in the ordinance that's before you, it says the ordinance shall take effect and be in full force from February first. Council, or the board originally asked for January one. I asked, I put this delay of a month to make sure that we don't have any problem setting up a billing for the commercial customer who requests the single update, and also just give us time to make sure we get all the new rates in there without, without a glitch. And so that's, that's, you can, of course, amend it, but, and we could, you know, hold it or whatever, but I think it would be better to hold it off till February first so that we make sure there aren't any technical glitches between now and when we send the bills out.
Okay. I do have one question.
Yes.
Under item D, it says a service charge of thirty-three dollars per dumpster for question months per week. It goes on to say, if after the first question each week, additional questions are made that week, a thirty-three dollar service charge for each additional dumpster? Or you're going to pay it for a whole month for one additional pickup?
Um, I don't know that we changed the wording in that one, except for the number, but the point, what we're trying to say, if you have the first collection each week, additional collections are made each week. So if you get two pickups a week.
Right.
You pay sixty-six dollars a month.
Right.
If you get one collection, one pickup a week, you get paid thirty-three dollars a month.
Right.
But if it's one dumpster picked up twice a week, if you have two dumpsters picked up twice a week, it would be, I'm actually capitalizing this. Two dumpsters twice a week would be a hundred and thirty-two. Four dumpsters, five times a week would be six-sixty. It just follows a, a grade, so each collection.
This is act, if there's an additional collection that is, or is, because we were talking about additional, you know, somebody making, asking for one additional pickup in a month?
Right.
And we were looking, is that not what this deals with?
No, that's under E. For each additional collection of refuse, initial blah blah blah, in excess of their regular weekly schedule.
Okay.
A weekly charge of five dollars for the collection of one or two nice solid waste cars, blah blah blah. And then eleven dollars for each dumpster, for each collection. Those are special collection.
Okay, okay.
You know, the wording isn't perfect. I, you know, I, I, I confess that I'm not perfect. But, but I think we've got it here. And the other thing in that, that new chat, that new paragraph E, a business can't choose to just have à la carte, "I'll call you when I want it," selection. So, I mean, in other words, if you only want to get picked up now and then and just call for, we're not going to charge you eleven dollars a dump. You have, you have service or you don't have service. If you have a very busy week, say you have a, a one-yard dumpster, you usually have a dump once a week, your monthly bill's thirty-three dollars. You get to a week where it's Monday or Tuesday, you don't get picked up again till the next Monday, and somehow you're full and you want to pick up, we'll come get it, call in, we'll come get it for eleven dollars. And, but then the rest of the month, you know, next, the following Monday, we pick you up once and once again.
Yeah.
That's, that's how it's supposed to work.
Okay.
I think that's what it says.
All right. That, that makes more sense to me, yeah.
Okay. But I, you know, it, when you're talking about, you know, a charge for each dumpster, for each pickup, for each week, maybe that chart might be easier.
Yeah. Sorry?
No. The sentence is, "A thirty-three dollars and a service charge for each additional dumpster." The wording should be taken out there?
Yeah, yeah.
And the N should be gone?
Yeah, like I said, I overwrote the.
Oh, so that one, pardon me again, okay.
Yeah, you can, I just downloaded it too early.
Yes.
Sorry.
I just. Alderman Magley, would you introduce this one, please?
Bill number.
Twenty-seven thirty.
I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty be given a free, first reading by title only.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven thirty be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Right.
May I close? Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending subsection of Section thirteen thirteen of the Centaria City Code to increase service charges for the collection and disposal of solid waste. Move that bill number twenty-seven thirty be given the second reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven thirty be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I close? Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending subsection of the, of Section thirteen thirteen of the Centaria City Code to increase service charges for the, for the collection and disposal of solid waste. Move that bill number twenty-seven thirty be adopted by a roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven thirty be adopted by a roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Roll call vote, please, sir.
Alderman Foreman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Locan.
Four.
All right. By your vote, bill number twenty-seven thirty passes and now becomes ordinance number.
Twenty-seven ninety.
Just to, should have been with my previous, the reason we're doing this is because of three-dollar-a-ton gate rate increase by the city of Columbia that started on October first. This, we should be able to hold this rate for, I, the minimum would be, not this coming April, but April of sixteen would be the first time we look at it again. And that's, the last time we changed this was November eleventh, so.
Yeah.
I'm hoping it'll be longer than that.
All right. Thank you. All right. Calling, April seventh, two thousand fifteen, municipal call, municipal election for mayor, three aldermen, and city collector, all for two-year terms. This is, the ordinance requires two readings. Alderman Ward, would you introduce this one, please?
Bill number.
Twenty-seven thirty-one.
All right, I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-one be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-one be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, compose.
Move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-one be given the second reading by title only.
You need to read the ordinance by title only, the first.
All right. A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance calling for a general city election to be held on Tuesday, April seventh, two thousand fifteen. The municipal election day to elect the mayor for a two-year term, to elect three aldermen for a two-year term, and to elect the city collector for a two-year term. I move that bill twenty-seven thirty-one be given the second reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-one be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I close? Continue, please.
Okay. A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance calling for a general city election to be held on Tuesday, April seventh, two thousand fifteen. The municipal election day to elect the mayor for a two-year term, to elect three aldermen for a two-year term, and to elect the city collector for a two-year term. I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-one be adopted by a roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-one be adopted by a roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I close? Roll call vote, please, sir.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Locan.
Four.
Alderman Foreman.
Yes.
All right. By your vote, bill number twenty-seven thirty-one passes and now becomes ordinance number.
Twenty-seven ninety-one.
Purchasing. Approval of the purchase of pad mount transformer. In your digital sheets in your packet.
The recommendation is for the lowest bid from HD Supply, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. The transformers will, the, the request is for a total of thirty transformers. We're going to use about ten of those in the Cobblestone Lake Estates expansion, or flat three. And then, so that's, and then the rest will be in inventory.
Backups, okay.
Motion to accept the, the HD Supply for thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion to second to accept a bid from HD Supply for transformers in amount of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I close? Purchasing electrical conduit.
Again, the request is for the purchase of the lowest-cost item from Butler Supply. The, about two-thirds of these will be used in the Cobblestone Lake Estates flat three, and then the rest will be inventory backup.
Make a motion that we accept Butler Supplies, heads of thirty-three thou, uh, three, three thousand, three hundred, ninety-five dollars for five hundred feet of two-inch conduit.
Yeah, second. I have a motion to second to accept a bid from Butler Supply, the amount of three thousand, three hundred, ninety-five dollars for fifty-six hundred feet of PVC conduit. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I close? All right. Thank you. Old business. Say for us to school grant update.
Uh, in the packet, there's a ranking of the midno RPC for their, the applications that were made to them for tap funds. From, they will also be ranking the other projects in the central district from other, other regional authorities, including CAPSO and the Jefferson City Capital Region Transportation Organization. As you can see, we got a high ranking. The low rankings will be cut out. The medium rankings may be reviewed again at the next level. But the mayor and I went down there last Wednesday and made a presentation to try and encourage the, that, that our grant is worthy of funding compared to some other very important grants, including some, you know, very compassionate plea for sidewalks in Prairie Home. It's a small community in Cooper County. But I just want to say that whatever presentation we made wasn't, primarily myself, mayor, it wasn't bad enough to spoil the work by Christine Lumbergh and liberate engineer Katrina Williams from the MM RPC. So at the request of the MM RPC, we also broke out the cost of the project by section. They did ask us during the presentation what we would get rid of if we had to. And the easiest thing for our staff to put in if we needed, or probably the least important part of the project, is directly in front of the school on the west side of the, of Jefferson Street. So that's what we, that was what we indicated to cut out. But Christine Lumbergh put some figures together to break it out by sections in a day. She sent that off to the RPC, and we should know by this time next month if it will be funded.
I just want to say that it's a significant achievement to get a high rating from that. You know, they've got a lot of good projects out there, a lot of passionate people that are, you know, vying for the product. So, good job there. Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very little, but.
All right. New business. I don't have any new business at this time. Alderman, have new business? City Minister, have new business?
Uh, yeah, apparently, not a very good typer. The, you received in your packet a proposed asset management project that is, Henry Brown at the University of Missouri came and spoke to me and Phil, and I, and this is sort of a project he has going. They're asking five thousand dollars for it. I do not have an ordinance prepared for this meeting because I'm not, we, we do have an asset management program or for asset, well, we have Asset Keeper for our, for our hard assets. This would, so it does keep track of what, what the value of roads are, and it does amortize them. This is more to kind of give us an idea of when a road will need rebuilding, sidewalk will be, need rebuilding. We have some of this stuff already. We had a company come through a number of years ago, and Phil has been using a software to help him keep track of the roads. The MM RPC has done a pretty extensive update, analysis of our sidewalks. I went in and put it in the packet. At this point, I'm not prepared to, I'll talk to him again. It was a little more extensive and a little bit better than what we have. I'm just not sure it's worth five thousand dollars. By the same token, I, you know, I don't want to be the, you know, Ashlands and Holt Summit, Tipton are going in on it. I don't want to mess it up. I just don't, I just don't think we need it. I think we've already got what we need, but I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of this in case.
When was our study, what was we working with now?
Uh, I think it was, it was not that long ago, about two, maybe three years ago. I'm going with Phil, I'm going with my memory and Phil's memory. So, you know, but he's got a pretty good idea of what the streets, you know, what the condition of the streets are. So, no, combined with the money we're spending with Midland, I just don't know that this is going to work for us. If there's somebody who feels this is a very, you know, it's important to cooperate with the university, it's another project the MM RPC is involved in, but.
So if, if we back out, is it, are they going to have to split the other five thousand dollars up between the rest of the cities?
I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, so I'll talk to Henry this week. All right.
I mean, my personal opinion is, is if we didn't have anything in place at all, I think this would be a good thing.
Yes, I agree.
But since we've already got something, I knew we did.
Yeah.
I talked to Phil about it before. I'd have to be kind of settled on what the benefits of this were.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's all I, I don't think I'll be bringing anything more back up to you on this issue. Make you aware of it.
Thank you.
I don't buy everything that comes across my desk, especially, as I said.
All right. Mert, do you have anything new?
Uh, I'm not sure if everybody knows this, that the Cobblestone Lake Estates flat three was worked on and with the possibility that it was going to be presented tonight. It's not, the developers are not ready to, for us to adopt that, so it, but I've been working with Matt on that. The developers are not ready for us to adopt that, so, but I've been working with Matt on that and, but it's not ready, so.
I think if they have their street done yet.
That's a main, that's a big part of it. I mean, you know, I was talking to Dave last Friday and they don't want to, I don't want to approve the plat out the road unless they put up some sort of bond and he doesn't want to do that, which I understand. And there was a couple other, there were some pieces about we didn't have a definition of the easement on the, for the bulb and a couple of other pieces, so. You know, just, we've got an extra, we've got five weeks till the next board meeting, so. There, but, but there's also a possibility that we might recess the meeting rather than for separate reasons, so that would, you know, give us an opportunity sooner if things all fall together.
Well, this is the time of the year, but roads clean very quickly.
No. Do we have another weekend, we have a week like we had this weekend? Sure.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put money on it.
We don't often get a week like that, is that true?
That's true. That's true.
Yeah.
Except for that work, I don't have any report.
Okay.
Is somebody going to check, make sure the ground is not furled before they pour on it?
They're going to call us before they pour. I talked to Haynes, I can't remember his first name, I keep forgetting. The guy, the contractor out there.
Have they poured anything yet?
No, not as of Sunday, Sunday.
Okay, I didn't look at it today. They haven't?
I assume they did pour today.
I figured they would pour then.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Heather?
I'm just to remind everybody that filings open tomorrow morning at eight a.m. for elections for the April seventh election. And then the city staff Christmas luncheon is this Wednesday from eight to, you all are invited to come if you'd like to.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you. As mayor eyes? Okay, I do have one correction to make in the minutes from the General Government meeting. Since I was present at that meeting on the date of December and I wasn't there, so. That's what I want to take that correction. All right. Larry, do you have anything? You know, we talked about making an appointment tonight, but I think we're still waiting on some amendment stuff.
Yeah, I think it goes to a point, like we're getting consideration, not adjourned, but just if you want to stay here in the room until whatever date that is.
The first meeting in January?
Yeah. Yes, sir. First meeting in January will get Dave Davenport scoring his part-time off, so. If Heather will do it that night, I.
Is it something I can make an appointment and on the contingency of his passing his medical stuff?
I think it'd be better to wait.
We've done that before, but sure enough, we get into that habit now. Is that to say that, obviously, I don't have any reservation that day at Davenport, having this conversation back.
Do we have?
Well, to get in that habit.
Do we have an expectation of a pledge?
It should.
The pledge or?
It was all, it was taken care of last Friday, so I shouldn't have spoken this week, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Well, I mean, if I were to make the appointment and, you know, he wouldn't be able to start until that paperwork came back and he was cleared to start, I don't know.
Right. We're good with that. We're good with that. He's full-time at the Columbia license office. So, you know, at least we'll all be.
Would you still rather wait or?
Well, the appointment is whenever he starts, whenever he gets his, he starts.
Okay, swear.
Yeah, we're going to swear him in, so we're, we're good.
Okay. We're just waiting.
We'll just wait till the fifth, he knows that.
Till the fifth, yeah.
I told him, yeah.
No, that's fine.
So we're good.
Yeah, we can recess the fifth, I don't think we're, I don't think we want to wait till the nineteenth.
Right.
Right, let's just recess, because you all got other bids to attend to, do you not?
Yeah, we, well, the, we have committee meeting that night, so the only person who's, I mean, it's Eric and Heather.
Yeah.
Aren't always here for those.
That's okay.
Yes, weren't you going to recess for something else?
Oh, well, if we, we don't have, it could work out for the.
If the street gets bored, we won't be.
Cobblestone Lake Estates, so it's not, it is, it's handy. I can't tell you if the other streets done by then, or you could.
Well, we'll just anticipate from that first Monday in January, you're going to be good to go.
That's no problem.
David score in and.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Making a motion, we recess until?
To Henry.
All right. I have a motion to second to recess until.